Let's call a meeting to order. Call the roll please.
Bolt?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Rutherford?
Here.
Sehorn?
Here.
Salter?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join us in invocation. We're going to get a one-armed prayer from Tom Lynch.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We thank you for putting us in a wonderful city with great folks. We thank you for those who serve in our city government. Lord, we pray tonight that the actions that were done in this meeting would be pleasing unto you. As we leave from here, we would ask that you would go with us, keep us safe from harm, and we'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in flag salute. Attention, position, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. And entertain a motion. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Salute.
Led by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Salter. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Citizens' participation. This is the time at which anyone can come to the podium, and you're allowed three minutes to speak. We have a 12-minute per-subject limit. If you'd like to speak, come to the podium, introduce yourself, sign in, and speak your piece. I wouldn't note that we're not allowed to engage, so this is kind of a one-way conversation. So you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Ackerman. I represent Blue Zone, and I also represent George Fisher Central Plastics, Shawnee, Oklahoma. I'm here tonight, I was asked this afternoon if I could maybe speak on behalf of the environment in our community. And the environment being the environment that's around us in a work area and in a home area, in a school area, things like that. And what I'd like to speak on tonight specifically is on the way that environment affects Rodney Approximately eight years ago, I had open-heart surgery due to some problems in my life, after which I went for a period of about a year and a half with a good diet and things like that, and I had no support. I had no support realistically from family, friends, things like that, community. Blue Zone has recently reached out to several areas in our community, including George Fisher Central Plastics. And with that in mind, they're bringing into our environment at George Fisher, they're bringing in a brand-new concept to me, which has helped me tremendously. In November of last year, I had two heart attacks back-to-back. So health and health issues have been very, very key to me in the last eight months to a year. And with that, Blue Zone couldn't have come at a better time for me in our community and for me in our workforce. It's been tremendous for me to be able to have the support of not only outside of the community reaching into George Fisher, but inside at George Fisher, people reaching out to Rodney Ackerman. I've actually had people that had come up to me and said, hey, you've tried a lot of health things, I'd like you to try this. I've now been a vegan for the last eight months. I've lost over 50 pounds. I feel tremendous. But the thing that has helped me out so tremendously in this transition period has been the fact that I've had so much support in the environment that's being created there at George Fisher through Blue Zone and through the community has been just tremendous. And I would like for you guys to consider tonight, as Blue Zone approaches this evening, that you consider how the environment of people around you can help you so tremendously. It's just been a real, it's had a large impact on my life to be able to know that my boss, my friends, my coworker, my HR department, all of these people have invested in, a vested, I can't even think of the word, but they're invested in Rodney Ackerman as well as themselves. They have a vested interest in me. And I'm proud to say that Blue Zone has helped in our reach, in my reach. As an individual and as a community, we have a large support group. We have several people that sit around the table at lunch and things like that and discuss what kind of things we're eating, what kind of things we're doing, the activities that we're taking part in. It's been a tremendous help for me, and I appreciate your time this evening in listening to me.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just dovetail on that healthy information, because that's what I'm going to provide also. Hi, I'm Sherri Smith, chairman of PACT, Potawatomi Alliance toward Community Health. Oh, okay. We're in this together. All right, here's some information. The Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 required school districts to participate in the National School Lunch or Breakfast Program to strengthen existing wellness policies. Each school is responsible for the development of their own policy so that the unique transparent needs of each school district are addressed. Starting in school year 2014 through '15, all foods sold at school during the school day are required to meet nutrition standards. The Smart Snack in-school regulation applies to food sold à la carte in school stores, vending machines, and any other venue where school food is sold to the students. On July 2016, the USDA Food Nutrition Service finalized regulations to create a framework and guidelines for the written wellness policies established by the local school districts. At a minimum, the nutrition and physical activity portion of the policies are required to include, one, specific goals for nutrition, physical activity, and other school-based activities that promote student wellness; two, standards and nutrition guidelines for all foods and beverages sold to students on the student campus during the school day are consistent with two federal regulations for school nutrition standards: the school meal, whether it be breakfast or lunch, and smart snacks. Standards for all food beverages provided but not sold to students during the school day, such as classroom parties, foods given for incentives, things like that, are part of this program. Policies for food and beverage marketing that allow marketing and advertising of only those foods and beverages that meet smart snacks and student nutrition standards. I don't know if you all are aware of that, but they're changing the food, you have to go by a list, even if you're providing snacks for your children's parties at school. Or, I believe, is it, yeah, it's a good thing, though. Shawnee Schools has been and continues to be a partner with the TSET Healthy Living Program, serving Potawatomi County since 2006. Most recently, on April 2, 2018, the Shawnee School Board voted to approve an updated wellness policy that meets all required elements of the federal law within the Healthy, Hunger- Hunger-Free Kids Act. This change is not only a change in policy, but a change in practice, which is the most crucial part of making an effective change. Shawnee School leadership understands the important role schools play in the development of lifelong health habits and the overall well-being of students by educating them about the importance of healthy behaviors, working jointly with the TSET Healthy Living Program and the Blue Zone Project. The newly adopted policy is recognized to be at a leader level regarding school wellness and policy strength and practice in Oklahoma schools. Toot the horn for Shawnee Schools. Shawnee School leadership, collaborating with multiple organizations in Potawatomi County, will have a direct impact, improving the health habits of the future by making healthy the healthy choice, the easy choice. Thank you.
So just a couple of things we've done along with those ratings. We went, by changing our policy, to update with our practices and make sure our practices were in line. We went from a strength training of 33% to 89% just by getting things in line. So some of the things we do are breakfast every morning for all students, free, of charge, all across the district. And so we want them to start out the day in the most healthy way. We make sure that we promote a lot of activities with the school lunch program. We send home healthy snacks. We maintain the drinking fountains. We make sure all the snacks sold are within those USDA regulations. As well as that, we have done a lot of things to increase the physical element and activity of the schools, and we took that strength rating from a 17% to 93% with the updating of policies. So we're well on our way. That's not to say we don't always have room for improvement, but we keep receiving awards every year of excellence and leader, and so we're excited to keep going and keep things healthy at Shawnee Public Schools.
How a girl. That was Dr. April Grace, for those of you who don't know. Next.
Hello. Rachel Milo with Blue Zones Project, and I am actually just reporting back after you passed a great policy called the Parklet Policy last time we were here, to let you know that the third Friday event that was done on Friday, we set up a temporary pop-up of a parklet. We took feedback, we did a contest for a parklet design. We had three submissions for people who designed fabulous parklets, and then we allowed the people to come through and give their opinions on what they liked and they didn't like. And in the meantime, the Avidus Foundation has granted CEF a small grant to put in the first parklet. And so I just say thank you for being progressive for our downtown, and I hope that you see a parklet being erected within the next 30 days or so in our downtown. So just want to say thank you, and it was not for naught.
Thank you, Rachel. For those of you who don't know, CEF is Safe Events for Families. Anyone else? Great. Item three, presentation by Blue Zones Project regarding the Well-Being Coalition. Chuck, I understand you and Miriam are going to inform us.
Good evening. Chuck Skellings, you guys know me as the guy from the hospital out north. I'm here more as somebody from the community as opposed to my role in healthcare. And going to just tee up for you tonight, this discussion, and then turn it over to the people that actually know what we want to do. About a year ago, a group of us got together and said, you know, we really wanted to do something visible with regards to Blue Zones. Changing the culture and changing health is hard to measure, it's hard to feel, takes a lot of time. And we wanted to do something to further engage at least part of the community in right off the bat. And so really, four of us at the beginning had a conversation with the Blue Zone staff, myself, Dr. Grace, who's here tonight, Dr. Whitlock from OBU, and Marty Lewis from Gordon Cooper Technology Center, and asked for ideas about how can we really launch something in a very visible, meaningful way. And needless to say, this is not a group of women you want to challenge, because they'll always rise to it, came up with a wonderful idea, and will do way more. And then it turns around, when you give them a job, you get one back. Actually, you probably get two back. But it is an opportunity to do something for our community that will send a message to the public that comes into the community, that this is forefront for our community, this is something we're all engaged in. We're hoping our little part of Shawnee will be the cornerstone, and it's something that will grow over time. But at this point, what I'd like to do is ask Miriam Bell to come forward and give you the details behind what we hope will be with your approval tonight, the first Well-Being District, approved Well-Being District in Shawnee. Miriam?
Is there a group of women that you would like to challenge?
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Mayor. So the ball has been punted to me, and I'm here to talk to you about the Well-Being District and what Chuck was really alluding to. And what it really comes down to is an environmental, geographical approach to well-being. The trajectory that we're on with well-being, it's scary. And we know that for the first time ever, the next generation is going to live shorter lives. We have to change that trajectory. And so this group of, this coalition of leaders really came up with the idea of a Well-Being District to be that tangible statement of creating an environment that supports well-being. We need our community to be prepared, supported, and encouraged in their personal transformation. And that's what the Well-Being District is really about. So I received some confirmation that you all were able to see the documents, but what we're really challenging our local leaders to do is to define an area, define criteria, tackle some really tough issues in tobacco environment, the food environment, the built environment, and then media and promotions, to address well-being, complete the criteria, bring it to the coalition, and the coalition and leaders does all the work. So like Chuck said, we punt the work right back to him. Well, he is going to be part of that group reviewing all the information and all the criteria completed for the Well-Being District, and then that coalition will bring it to the city commissioners and say, they have completed the criteria. Now, I want to back up a little bit and just let you know that all of these criteria that you've seen in these documents that we've shared with you are best practices, they're evidence-based, they are proven to make an impact on our behaviors within our environment. And we ask each area, each influencer, to impact two in each criteria. So they need to do two tobacco environment tasks, they need to do two food environment tasks, they need to do two built environment tasks, and they need to do two with district media and programs and promotion. So they're not just doing these policies, but they need to be promoting it, they need to be singing from the rooftops, and they need to be engaging their community. With that being said, I would really like to open this up for some questions, because I can see some wheels turning, and I'd really like to hear what your questions are and how I can address those for you.
Questions?
I mean, this just falls in line with what we've been doing for the last year, year and a half. So it makes perfect sense to me.
Any questions? This is a big deal. Now, I understand it's the first one in the state of Oklahoma.
Yes.
Yes.
And it's a geographical area that's mostly the western part of the city that's going to undertake this. And I've been involved in this, and I can't begin to describe how big a deal this is for Shawnee and for the future development of our city along with our workforce. We tend to think of it in terms of health, but you need to think of it in terms of a place that people want to live. These kids are not like we were. We went where the job was. They don't do that now. They go where they want to live and find the job when they get there. And if we're going to be successful in recruiting people to live here and work in our plants that are so necessary for the sales tax that we live off of up here, we've got to get people to want to live here. And everything that they're about and most of what we're about and many of the other groups around town that are so successfully implementing these things are about creating a place where people want to be, whether it's Shawnee Community Renewal, or Family Promise, or what it is. It is kind of neat, the way it folds together.
Is this more of a concentrated effort in certain areas to build an example of what can be done in the larger area?
Absolutely. So the initial district was defined by the initial influencers, because they want to go through the practice. They want to experience the process in their own backyards and impact where they live, work, and play. And the idea is that it's a geographical area that has a lot of variance in the makeup. So it's got the residential area, it's got the strip malls and the family centers and the parks, and then it has the OBU and SSM and the bigger campuses, so that this initial rollout will be able to experience and learn from all of that information. And we've got some really smart people at the table that are able to tackle these issues. But then, as this grows and as future Well-Being districts get developed, we now have a bank of information and individuals who will serve as the resource to help make that happen. We want this to become citywide. We want this to be contagious. And so we need to focus on one concentrated area, learn, and move on, and keep the momentum going.
Miriam, you might describe the geographical boundaries of the area.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the initial geographical area is from 39th Street to Farrell, and then between Kickapoo Spur and Darian Gordon Leo, and then Kennedy. So it includes the airport, it includes, the northern portion is SSM with OBU, the airport, and then that central area includes the YMCA and the Shawnee High School Early Learning Development Center. And then that southern portion is highly residential and includes the Housing Authority. So we have the Housing Authority involved and the new, if you went to the grand opening, the Friendship House that is now open on 7th Street.
It's certainly easier to get enthusiasm in a smaller group than it is a large. The more diffuse it is, the more difficult that becomes.
Absolutely.
It's time to handle the process.
Any other questions? Do you have a staff recommendation? Thank you, Miriam.
Staff recommendation's approval.
And we have a resolution of support. Has it been read into the record, or does it need to be read?
We just finished, Mayor, the presentation, so the next items to consider, the resolution.
Is there a motion to consider the resolution?
Someone.
Who's that? Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum. Is there any discussion among the board?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution supporting the Shawnee, Oklahoma Well-Being District.
You want to read the resolution, or do we need to, you just read the title? Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Resolution supporting the Shawnee Well-Being District, item five, presentation by Blue Zones Project, Healthy Food Environment. This must be Blue Zones now.
You know, I can't come to a meeting without saying something.
I've noticed.
I am. Getting all the people up here. This is great. There we go. Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Mayor. I am Holly Gordon, and I am here this evening with Neil Lindenbaum.
Hello.
And we are appointed members of the Potawatomi County Food Policy Council. One year ago this month, you all, some of you new people, you may not know this, our city commission voted in a resolution that put us to work. And what we do is, we're comprised of community stakeholders throughout Potawatomi County, including tribal nations, to really look at the food systems in our county. And we have representation from McLeod, Earlsboro, Tecumseh, Shawnee, and key stakeholders that work in the food area of food systems. So we've been tasked to, primarily, one of the things we've been asked to do is identify and recommend to the city government on policy initiatives to support the goals and objectives of the council. And some of the goals and objectives are, is to look at our food systems and look at where the pitfalls are and report them back to you, and to bring you all recommendations. So tonight is our opportunity to bring you our first recommendation. Before you, you have a resolution. It's the resolution supporting a healthy food environment, and that is for Shawnee and Potawatomi Cantwell, city of Shawnee. And as you heard tonight, this is the support of Shawnee's core values. Yeah, and we walked in and we looked at those with wellness, collaboration, pride. That's what you just heard previously from Sherri Smith, the chairperson of the Potawatomi County Health Coalition. She came up and talked to you about our schools here, and Dr. Grace talking to you about being a leader, at the leader level. That's a big deal, you guys. Collaborative work, the Well-Being District, these influencers working collaboratively together, shooting for an environmental vision of well-being. Mayor, you talked about economic impact. When we're recruiting new businesses to come into our community, when we can show the level of quality of life in our community and to be able to recruit good workers for our worker pool, we're leveling up. So this, what we're asking for is support in this Healthy Food Environment Resolution to really help make the easy choice the healthiest one, make the healthy choice the easy one. And we can educate our people that live here in Shawnee and in Potawatomi County all about it. Do you have any questions?
You're going to let Neil talk?
He said he would.
I didn't want to talk. Moral support.
If I was standing there, I wouldn't want to talk either.
I know. It's sort of like Chuck, he's, when a group of women, you know, he shows up, he does the work.
Questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, discussion consideration possible action. No, we're not. I'm ahead of itself. Is there a motion?
Someone.
Six.
Commissioner Bolt on six. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, discussion consideration and possible action to determine process for selection of a permanent city manager, including formation of a search subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commission members. This item was placed on your agenda just so you could begin the discussion process. You certainly don't have to take any action tonight. You might recall during the last search, there was a subcommittee that was formed of the city commission, I think it had two or three members on it, and you were able to work with Human Resources Department and the interim city manager to fulfill the search responsibilities, and so that's one avenue for you to take, but certainly the board's pleasure on what direction you'd like to go.
Is that an appointed committee?
I think someone would just simply make a motion.
To form the committee? With its content set forth?
With the membership set forth, and that would allow staff to begin to work with that committee to begin the process.
Is there a motion to form a search committee by a group of commissioners not constituting a quorum to search for a permanent city manager?
Is that a committee? What kind of recommendations or what kind of action are they going to take?
I would anticipate that they would place ads or requests with the typical people that provide resumes. There are national firms through which I think, I understand, are Clearinghouse and maybe some state, and we may do some advertising, but much of that is to be determined. You've been through this before, and this is my first rodeo, so.
Go ahead, Martin. Sorry.
No, you're good.
They, I would prefer we, you know, the committee can be formed, but they need to, they have to come back to the commission, say for hiring a headhunter without, what do you call it, a request for proposals to, for a group to, you know, solicit and solicit the resumes and so forth, and check the people out, and come back with critical recommendations instead of us trying to go through 20 or 30 applications and narrowing it down and stuff like that.
That's kind of what I was going to say was, if a committee is formed, would they have the option to hire someone to do this for us, and then, or they have to come back to the commission if they say, hey, we don't want to go through all this ourselves, let's hire a headhunter firm, or whatever the correct word for that is.
I think that's up to the commission to determine.
Wouldn't they come forward possibly two or three that would be interviewed by the commission itself?
If it's the pleasure of the commission that the search committee cull through the applications and select whatever numerical number you all feel like would be, I don't care if it's top 10, top 5, doesn't matter, and then present those back to the commission as a group, would that be appropriate?
Absolutely. I mean, you guys can set up your format however you'd like.
But if we're going to hire a firm to do this, or hire this done, and it would come back to this group as a whole?
I would not, I would not propose that this committee has the authority to engage anybody.
By that technical.
Absent the commission's favorable.
If the commission acts.
Absolutely.
So we'd solicit our, on the RFPs like you were saying, James, just send those out to the search companies.
Proposals from, from people who do that. And I, we've done it both ways. And I personally, from my experience, I think it's better to, they can go do more research than individual commissioners or we can as a commission and come up with a, I think, viable candidate easier than, than each one of the commissioners can go through a group of resumes. We've, like I said, I've been through this two or three times, so I think you might call it a headhunter or whatever you want to call it, but anyhow, somebody to take the resumes and go through them and check them out and things like that, I think it will leave money well spent.
Counselor, is that sufficient information to you, to allow you to?
I mean, I might try and distill it a little bit. I mean, I think what I'm hearing is leaning towards a motion to have a committee of commissioners to go, go solicit and then present a proposal and recommendation for the process of hiring the manager, which is likely to include some sort of third-party service.
Is that a motion?
That's kind of what I heard.
Yeah. But I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's, you know, sold on the idea or wants to do it this way, because like I said, I've just, I've been through this three, three times, I know. And so I would, and we've done it both ways. So I would move that we go ahead and appoint a committee and give them the authority to come back to the commission with a recommendation on, on a search, on a search group or some, some method of soliciting resumes for a city manager.
Is there a second?
We need to get the committee members identified in the motion if possible. Or pick somebody who's going to select the committee members and the number.
Or maybe easily three.
Right.
Yeah. We can't, we can't have more than three. And if there are there volunteers that would like to serve.
I like that.
Commissioner Herrick. Do you think it's necessary that I be on there?
No, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. We have three volunteers. Is that okay in your motion? Commissioners Bolt, Gillum, and Herrick.
So just to clarify, the release of the motion would be to appoint a committee of Commissioner Bolt, Commissioner Gillum, and Commissioner Herrick for the purpose of identifying and presenting proposals to the commission at large with regard to the hiring of a new city manager.
Does that describe your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Just a point of clarification, there's nothing in this motion that would preclude the committee from seeking and taking advice from community members at large.
That is true.
And the, the committee would have the option of going through whatever length of time it is, week two, three weeks, a month of resumes, or coming back to the commission as a whole and recommending hiring a, out there, a third party?
That's my understanding.
So all of those options are still available, just?
And the remainder of the commission should have access to the resumes that you all get. So it's, it's not a secretive or closed, closed meeting.
But if we decide to go with a search committee, then we'll ask for, what do you call it, RFP?
RFP.
And then everyone will have an opportunity to review those.
Any further comments? Call a question? Motion carries seven zero. Item eight, acknowledged monthly sales tax. Mr. Allison.
Good evening. Sales taxes came in at 1.553 million, which is essentially flat over our July receipts. We're, we're hoping September is, what we receive in September is typically slightly lower than, than the rest of the months during the year-to-date from July, August receipts. So we're hoping to see a slight increase and we'll see hopefully the effect of the internet sales tax legislation that was passed by the state. Other than that, we're working, we're still trying to revise FY19 budget. And so we're hoping, hopefully September will have a final, a budget proposed, you all.
Very good. Any questions, comments?
Well, I was hoping this month would show an increase because of construction on I-40, but it's been about forty-five days now. So I guess traffic's still going west.
Thank you, Chance. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My pleasure to update you on a few important pending projects. The police headquarters building, Chief Wilson and I met with TAP Architecture last week to test fit the floor plan and review a draft building report you approved back in, I think it was May, the hiring of TAP Architecture to provide an evaluation for the building to make sure we know what we're walking into. At that time, you also approved environmental investigations that have been completed as well. The environmental investigations indicate that there is some asbestos present in the building, but it looks like it's reasonably contained and can be dealt with relatively inexpensively through the remodel process. So overall, the building appears very well-suited for the intended use. And the architecture firm is kind of finalizing their report and they're working with Chief Wilson and they will be presenting to you probably in September or October the final report and be able to answer any technical questions that you have at that time. But it looks, all looks very well in terms of the use of that building and the conversion of that building into the police headquarters.
Do you have a date when that building might be available?
The building will be available in approximately a year. It'll take about a year to construct the, the new headquarters for First United Bank. Fire station number two, building itself is nearing completion. Obviously, the dirt work and the concrete work has, has been delayed because of the recent rains. And so we're probably about three to four weeks out still on that project. Appreciate your patience on that. I assure you, no one wants that finished more than the fire chief and myself and probably the contractor at this point too, but we're, we're getting close. Comprehensive plan update. I'd like to thank the community for its participation at the public events in August. Some of you were involved in those events. More events are scheduled for early September and so look for that information as it's posted on our website or social media. And thank you for your participation. Lastly, I want to talk to you about Broadway Street and the Marquee Project. I thought that would be fitting tonight because Blue Zones staff was here. And at your last meeting, you heard Rachel Milo updating you on the Broadway Street project. Since that time, city staff has started the process of evaluating design options and cost estimates. We want a project that, that we can tackle and that is feasible, but that also meets our goals and aspirations. And we're finding that a little bit challenging because construction projects are expensive, but we're, we're looking at options and how we can make the best, the best project possible for the community. So we'll be working with our partners over the next month or two to kind of refine those designs and estimates and bring you an update at a future meeting. Lastly, since this is my last meeting with you, I wanted to say a special thank you to the mayor and commissioners. Appreciate all your support that you've given me in this role. It's been a privilege serving you and the community. I'd also like to thank my family for their support and sacrifice during this tenure as well. I'd also like to thank the entire city staff for their hard work and dedication. We have a great staff and team. They care about the community and they come to work every day trying to improve the quality of life for Shawnee. And any success I've had during my tenure should be credited to them. So it's been a pleasure working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Is there any new business?
Mr. Mayor, there is an item of new business this evening. On the dais before you is an agreement for administration of the sales and use tax ordinances. This is a standard agreement that we have in place with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Our current agreement was approved by the commission on November 2nd, 2015. We just received today this revised agreement that does need to be signed so that they can begin implementing the new tax rate that becomes effective October 1st. So staff would recommend approval of the agreement before you with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. Do you have to answer any questions that you have?
Are there any questions? This is a standard agreement.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve? Who moved? Moved by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Herrick. Any further discussion? Call a question? Motion carries seven zero. Commissioner comments? Mr. Bolt.
Mr. Bolt, can I interrupt you?
Absolutely. Ready?
Are there some guests in the foyer that may want to come in? I have a feeling some of the commissioner comments.
Yeah, in fact, I wanted to start right there because, Justin, I think you guys have been just such a wonderful thing for our community, your entire family. And, you know, personally, I'd like to have kept you here another thirty years, but, you know, we knew that the likelihood of that was, was probably, probably unlikely. And, and I certainly understand why you want to go back home and I think that's important and I think you're doing it at the right time before your kids go to school. So I think it's a good decision, even though we probably don't like it. But, but thank you so much for what you've done for Shawnee and, you know, we wish you the, the best. And I know you'll do great up there. One other thing that I want to talk about, and it's not an easy thing for me to talk about, a lot of you know that, I don't know if I can, a lot of you know that Phyllis and I lost a son about a year ago. And this weekend, we were fortunate enough to meet the little girl that received my son's kidney. And it was really nice to see that she's doing so well where she was on death's door. But now you never know that. She just looks like a healthy nine-year-old girl and ran around with our grandkids and swam in the pool and we had a great time getting to know them. So like I said, it's always be a hard thing for me to talk about. But anyway, my, my, the reason I'm telling you that is, is I just want to encourage everybody to become an organ donor if you haven't done that. Obviously, that's a decision you have to make personally. But if you could see the difference that it made in this little girl's life, I don't know how you could say it. You know, I almost stopped there, but thank you.
I've been under, worked for, with, over, under, around two city managers in my time. I was fortunate enough to have Terry Palf for eight years from ninety-two to two thousand. Exceptional man, Marine, ex-copter pilot. He was perfect for that time. This was a little bit different than what we have right now. It was a little bit more in the Wild West and yes, we had a lot of, a lot of things to saw. And he was a Marine and one of the most dedicated guys I've ever seen. Had thirty of his cap blown away and run marathons, the most competitive man I've ever met. Perfect for that time. I think we had a gentleman here that was perfect for our time. And at a perfect time to calmly and coolly, at a nice, simple, easy way, be able to accomplish and to have people respect you and, and move ahead as a city and look at what's happened to us in the last three or four years. You've accomplished a lot for us here and we're certainly grateful for that. We wish you ultimate success wherever you go and happiness for that wonderful family you have.
I'd like to say, Justin, thank you for your leadership for ten years. And the City of Shawnee is a lot better off because you were here. So again, thank you.
The ones said quite a lot tonight. Justin, thank you for everything you've done, for the city, for being here. Katie, Bella, Chloe, we're going to miss you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Justin when he was in planning when we were building the facility and kind of got to know him there. And he's been a huge asset to the City of Shawnee. And on the family side, you know, it's time to go home and we hate to lose you, but we definitely wish you the best.
Well, my first introduction really to city government was in '09 when I was appointed to the Planning Commission, the first term, and Justin was the planning director. And then being able to work with him and for him as on, on the city commission, when he informed me that he was leaving, I told him I was going to vote no. So they put it under the consent agenda, so I couldn't do it. We're going to miss you.
It kind of fell in my chair to, to, I knew he was looking and have known for a long time, but that's an environment that I've lived in for many, many years. So we deal with it and I, and I hate to see him go. And I told him if they could put up with the snuff cup that he spit in all the time and, and get it cleared with his parole officers that they were dumb enough to hire him, and, and they did. So, you know, what can I say? I've worked very closely with Justin for the last couple of years and it, and it really has been a pleasure. I love working with young men, particularly quality young men that, that understand how things are supposed to be and, and provide the dedication and the leadership that we need from a city standpoint. And we, we've been through a little bit of turmoil, but I think he's done a, an excellent job of trying to cement those relationships that may have been strained in the past. And, and I think at this point, he leaves the city in as good a shape as, as he could possibly have left it. And with that in mind, I've got a little presentation.
All right, you surprised me.
I did surprise you.
Justin Erickson, city manager, City of Shawnee, August 18th, 2008 through August 30th, 2018. For your outstanding service, untying dedication and unyielding commitment to the citizens of Shawnee, we'll miss you.
Thank you, sir.
And I got to have a hug in addition. I have one other comment. In, in the Classroom Partners Program that the Chamber has worked so hard to put together, they found sponsors for a hundred classrooms around the community. Horace Mansum in Shawnee, Pleasant Grove. And, and I'm lucky enough to have been able to sponsor one of those classrooms. And at Pleasant Grove last week, we were talking about going through the Blue Zones stuff and some of the things that they're doing. One of the programs that they're trying to put together is a walking school bus. And, and I'm down there and we're going through this stuff and they said, okay, the walking school bus for Pleasant Grove is like the third Thursday of next month. And I thought I didn't hear it right. That to, to my way of thinking, a walking school bus is something we do every day. It's not something we do once a month. So my charge to the citizens of Shawnee is get off your fannies and call a school that's close to you, call the Blue Zones office, and volunteer to walk some of these kids to school. And, and, and they won't be so fat. Now, the football coach won't like that, but that's what it's got to take to keep from, from having the, the amount of heart disease that I've had through my lifetime, and I hope your result is different. And that, like Forrest Gump, that's all I'm going to say about that. And we are, we are recessed, recessed to the Shawnee Airport Authority. If I can find it. Shawnee Airport Authority has called, called order, would enter, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Herrick, second by Commissioner, was it Bolt?
No, it's Gillum.
Gillum, sorry?
No, 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 y'all didn't say.
Over there somewhere. Call a question? Motion carries seven zero. Item two, consideration, discussion, possible action on an agreement for services with H.W. Lochner, Lochner, Lochner for FAA AIP project number three dash forty. Lochner, Lochner, Lochner for FAA AIP project number three dash forty dash oh oh eight eight dash oh one eight dash two oh one eight, constructing hangar taxi line.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to start out the summary tonight by giving you exceptionally good news, which is that we just received a half a million dollars from FAA to pay for this project. So.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go. That's the best news.
Just for construction of the taxiway.
There is a small distinction, sir. It's a taxi lane and the pads to support the new T-hangers, which will give residence to ten more tenants. The Lochner firm was actually hired by the city after following a request for qualifications that was published in 2014 of thirteen firms that were submitting proposals and statements of qualifications. They were narrowed down to a list of three and then chosen from that list. They have been serving the city in the form of an airport engineer since that time on a variety of different projects. This particular project, they have done the design work for the construction that we have planned and that fee was eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars, just for the record. They will commence the work on the construction administration and oversight portion of this project if approved this evening. The cost of the construction is eight hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The fees that Lochner is requesting for their construction administration oversight services is one hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, which is approximately eighteen percent of the total cost of construction, which is considered well within the boundaries of the norm for the kind of work we're doing. With any kind of dirt work, anybody who's ever done it, you really need your engineer onsite and a lot of extra time, but we're hoping that we'll complete this in the ninety days that are allotted and, and meet that standard and those fees as put forward. As far as the source of funding goes, we do have funding available from some prior land sales of some areas around the airport, the Little Theater, OBU, and also the Early Childhood Development Center was sold a number of years ago. Put that cash into a restricted fund because it is land that was given to the city of Shawnee by the United States Navy and may only be used for projects of this nature. We're also looking at the sale of two additional plots of land to make sure that we have enough funds to cover the project and any concerns that may arise as we dig the dirt. So the recommendation from staff then would be for this commission to approve the execution of an agreement with Lochner Engineering to continue the project.
Are there questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Rutherford moves, we approve. Who's seconded?
I said.
Seconded by Commissioner Seagull. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Again, would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. City commission is reconvened. Item twelve, discussion, consideration, possible action to enter into executive session for the purpose of interviewing and/or naming a specific individual to serve as interim city manager pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee. Is there a motion?
Somewhere.
Commissioner Bolt, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. You all may stay. We're leaving.
Do number thirteen, Mr. Will.
Item thirteen, consider executive session to discuss municipal Judge Wiley's employment contract with the city of Shawnee pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1, discussing employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee. Is there a motion to enter executive session on this item?
Somewhere.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, is there a second? Commissioner Gillum again. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. You may wait or not. Since it was the first item.
I have a fourth.
Item fourteen, consider, consideration, possible action on matters discussed in executive session for the purpose of interviewing and/or naming a specific individual to serve as interim city manager pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual, salaried public officer or employee. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move with point Eric Benson as the interim city manager and authorize the, uh, uh, city manager and the city attorney to execute a contract with the appointee and that the appointee's compensation, we had seventy-five dollars an hour capped at twelve thousand dollars per month and that he'd be reimbursed for temporary housing up to six thousand dollars a month.
Two thousand.
Yeah, up to six thousand for the.
Six thousand for the period.
Ninety days for two thousand dollars a month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries second, seven zero. Item fifteen, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding discussion municipal Judge Wiley's employment contract to the city of Shawnee pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual, salaried or public officer. Judge Wiley informed us in executive session that it is his desire and intent to retire from the bench effective November 30th, 2018 and so with that in mind, would entertain a resolution?
I, I move to accept the resignation of municipal Judge Randall Wiley effective November 30th, 2018 and that his employment contract and term of employment be extended to that date.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
That's correct, Joe.
Motion carries seven zero. Judge, you will find retirement empowering. We are adjourned. Thank you for your persistence.